Hi, good afternoon and welcome to the Milford Select Board Meeting of February 15, 2023. Thank you for joining us. The first order of business would be the signing of the warrant or entertain a motion to sign the warrant?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we sign the warrant for the meeting of January 22nd, correct?
Okay.
I would second that, Mr. Chairman.
Yes, and I make that unanimous. Thank you. Second item on the agenda would be the approval of the minutes of the regular session that we had on January 22nd, 2024.
Chairman, I make a motion we approve the regular session minutes of January 22nd, 2024.
I would second that, Mr. Chairman.
And I make that unanimous. Thanks so much. We do have two public hearings. Our first public hearing is with Sinesta International Hotels Corporation doing business at Sinesta Select Boston Milford, and this regarding approval of an updated corporate offices on the Massachusetts Secretary of the Commonwealth's corporate filing. I guess in the past, the recent past, they did file the same, and there is a change in the offices that they have. All paperwork is in order. We also have a letter of approval from the Secretary of the Commonwealth, William Francis Galvin, and also, and investigator also went through the procedure as they're supposed to do, and they found out that there was no further action that needs to be taken but the approval from the local board. So a motion to approve the changes of the corporate offices for the Sinesta International Hotels at doing business in Milford.
I make a motion that we approve and assent to the change of corporate offices of Sinesta International Hotels Corporation, DBA, Sinesta Select, Boston, Milford.
I would second that, Mr. Chairman.
And of course, well, this is a public hearing, and there was no public here to comment and no one on the screen, so anyway, that's fine. So we have the motion made in second, and I approve that unanimously. We also have another public hearing with Mandarin and Milford Restaurant of 196 East Main Street, and this is filed for an application to seek an amendment to its common eviction license. And again, all paperwork is in order. The building commissioner said that it is its zone CB zone and its use and occupancy are fine. The occupancy load is 237, and this building and restrooms are accessible. Town planner okay's it with no changes of the actual use. The tax collector indicates there is no outstanding taxes. Town treasurer has no comments. Fire department has no objections. Police chief approves this, and the board of health has no violations. Again, I would entertain a motion to approve the application to seek an amendment to its common eviction license on all alcoholic beverage license and add live entertainment.
Chairman, I make a motion that we approve the amendment to the common eviction license, all alcohol beverage license to add live entertainment for Mandarin and Milford Restaurant Inc.
Thank you.
I would second that, Mr. Chairman.
And I make that unanimous. And of course, where this is a public hearing, nobody else either, okay? Thank you. Thanks, Chris. Next on the agenda, on the scheduled appointments, is we have our finance director, Zach Taylor, and he'll be here tonight to talk about a financial update to us. Zach?
Zach.
Speaking to you in the past, just a little briefly, it was shown that we may be facing some financial challenges for 2024.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. As you mentioned, we met a couple of weeks ago, myself and the chairman of the Finance Committee, Rick Bellani, and the financial analyst that helped me prepare this, Paul Abadonsen. Yep, ultimately, I want to go over what at this time, our responsibility, my responsibility to put together a balanced budget. So I'm going to present to you what is a balanced budget, but I want to make clear right out of the gate, this is not what likely will be submitted. So there's a lot of desire and initiatives, if you will, but this right now is a balanced budget, and the directive is going to go out that any initiative need to be reviewed, and we'll see how they fit into the scenario. At this time, I'm going to present what we have, a couple warnings, and we'll do our normal thing, flow through the year. All right, so right now, we're starting on the left-hand side, we look at estimated revenues. I'm going to go through our revenues. Biggest component of our estimated revenue was the levy, real estate, personal property taxes. Pretty predictable because of the magic of Proposition 2.5, 2.5% above where we could have been last year, plus new growth is the basic formula. We're using $800,000, which is a conservative number, and that's based very much on past history and discussions with the assessors office. So right now, it's a safe number. Our contacts last year were 1.2, prior year was 700, so the number's safe right there. I'm going to call out some things that I want you to kind of put a pin in, and I'm going to wrap it all up with the conclusion of the presentation. So those two numbers equal about a $3 million increase in our levy. So kind of think about that as I present the rest. Cherry Sheet, the governor's budget is out at this time. We use the exact figures that's presented in the governor's budget. In past years, certainly, we all know, Chapter 70 over the past four or five years has been pretty significant, and that's a result of the Student Opportunity Act. Chapter 70 is the component of Cherry Sheet that is for the purpose of the school department. Last year was approximately 18% increase. This year, kind of back to reality, we're looking at a 4% increase. Overall, in total state aid is about $2 million increased over last year. When you look at below that, we have sewer revenue, water revenue, that's a direct offset of what you would see on the right side of the budget, so I'm going to kind of somewhat ignore that for now. So the two pins they ask you to put in, $3 million increase in levy, $2 million increase in state aid. That's pretty much it for our.
That was for this year, the $2 million?
It's projected for this year.
Do you know what it was last year?
State aid, $8 million. Was a huge number last year. All right, so those two numbers together, $5 million. You look at our total revenue, projecting $165,668,000. That's only $5 million increase from last year. That's an important figure to keep in your mind for now. Lipping to the right-hand side, we're going to go over our major expenditures. Largest component of anything we do here between the two town meetings is the operational budget. Operational budget, we're projecting, again, a lot of this is based on historical data, but also known increases. So real quickly, we used a 3.5% increase across all budgets, with the exception of police at 4.5, fire at 4.25, school at 6.5, VVT at a 4% increase, retirement's a funding schedule that's adopted at 6.7% increase, and for now, we're using health insurance at 6.5%. Those numbers shake out to an operational budget of $151 million or an $8 million increase over last year. So that pin I asked you to place in there, $5 million increase in estimated revenue, $8 million projected increase in operational budget, okay? That's challenge number one right there. If you look at the bottom of the right-hand side, and again, before I get into that, that's built out for what would be a nice ideal budget, not suggesting that that's what's actually going to be submitted, based on the conversations we had, Mr. Chairman. We know that there's some initiatives that are coming, and we're going to have to look at each one of them and see how they may fit. Some may have to be delayed, some may rise to the level of importance where we want to tackle now, but there's a give and take with everything as we all know. So if you focus on the bottom right-hand side, these are either items that must appear in the tax recap or what I like to call our goals and objectives. So starting with the tax recap items, that's the overlay, the second one down, $760,000. That is money that's accounted for for abatement, exemptions, for veterans and whatnot. That's a very solid figure. It's right, it would be an immaterial difference from when we actually do the tax recap. Right below that is assessments of $4.4 million. That's part of state aid. It's, Mike, here's $20, but I'll take it two back. So that's part of the state assessment. That's the exact figure that's in the governor's budget. Sometimes that one will fluctuate, but probably not to the level of anything material, or certainly not for purposes of today's discussion. The next three items are our goals and objectives. One, stabilization of $1.745 million. This is important because we have been staying on this trend of putting away for the inevitable new school project that's running. And trust me when I tell you this, we've all heard the large numbers, we are going to need stabilization to basically control tax hikes as a result of doing this mega-bonding, as I'll call it. What we had been doing at one time was $1.5 million, as debt has been falling off, which it has, projects have been falling off, we've been increasing that stabilization amount for the theory of maintaining that budget level. But when we do actually bond, that budget that had the bonds in, it didn't get eaten up by school or any other departments, it's still available for when we do a bond. So that's an important component here. The next, if we look at capital projects, this is at the levy level only, so I want to stress that too, this is not taken into account free cash, which we do have a balance now, and we likely will have a balance once June 30th comes and goes. At the levy raising appropriate level, we have $1.75 million, and I'll go over some potential capital that's coming down the line. But before I do that, the last component, when you see fiscal year 2024 levy adjustment, that is referring to excess levy capacity. This is important too. This is the amount that we could legally raise without a Prop 2.5 override or a debt exclusion, but it's important that we try our best to maintain a level here, again, directly tying this back to the inevitable school bonding, which could be as high as $7-plus million. So if you're kind of following along here, between the stabilization and the levy adjustment, the 5.7 and the 1.7, those two important components, once we actually bond, we're going to stop contributing to stabilization, and here's our money to be able to handle the debt.
Excuse me, Zach. Under the capital projects, where we have the $1.75 million that we have, then we have the potential capital projects that we were talking about of $6.4 million. In other words, this is what we would have on the capital projects tomorrow, unless if these need all to be funded?
Yeah, so the larger items that we'll talk about momentarily, I'm identifying because, number one, they are significant, and two, some of these very likely are going to appear in May as opposed to October. So at this time, we traditionally put in a number of about $1.75 million for capital that will account for all the other smaller items, a new cloud drop.
Right, so the other potential are in addition to the $1.75?
That is absolutely correct, and that's super important to note.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, so that's outlining what kind of our methodology is going to be, maintaining these levels to be able to handle this mega-project that's coming down the line. Now let me present some challenges that we know about right now, and I'm going to give a common theme on top of it. So Central Street Bridge, we appropriated funds back in 2021, $1.5 million plus got awarded a grant. Scott Chrisifoli goes out to bid, it's not sufficient. This was before massive inflation. We need to appropriate another million dollars just to be able to have sufficient funds to put this out to bid.
And that grant was how much?
Grant, I believe, was a half million.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, but we appropriated $1.5.
Exactly, right, right, plus the half million.
Yes.
Wow.
Milford Youth Center, water infiltration. Right now, we have a million. We don't know the exact figure, but that's coming. Milford High School feasibility study, just like we've been talking with the theme of the inevitable bonding, whether it's a renovation, whether it's a new building, that's what the feasibility study will tell us, but that will be coming this May, and it potentially be as high as $2 million. And then we all know with the geriatric authority, the challenges they have been dealing with, there's a very, very likely, a high likelihood that there will be an article in May. If there's not, there'll be an even higher likelihood there will be an article in October. I use $2.4 million now. I do not know that that's what the trustees are going to put in. The logic behind that is it's been approximately $200,000 per month on putting together a scenario that will take up a year, hence $2.4. Again, I want to stress, I don't know that that's the number. I don't know that that's what they're going to put in. All those together, $6.4 million. Now, when I was tying together a theme, with the exception of geriatric here, some of these items, and there's going to be others that I haven't listed here, are for past projects that we, what we've already appropriated for, but just have not been sufficient. Godfrey Brook is another one. We're going to see that in May. Scott Chrisifoli tried to put it out to bid, it wasn't sufficient, we need to appropriate more money. So that's one of the challenges we're seeing right now, is that thought we took care of some of these items, and we're not completely there yet, and the numbers are pretty material. That's why I'm listing them here. Secondly, this does provide for a balanced budget at this time, but again, that's not what may actually be submitted. In fact, I know the numbers are bigger. We went over them, Paul. It's been two weeks, and a lot of conversations have taken place since then, so the picture is getting better, but some more work needs to be done, and we definitely need to be doing some prioritizing. That's kind of the doom and gloom kind of painting here. Usually, I have some bases up my sleeve. We still do now. We have $2.8 million of free cash right now, so some of these items, we'll see how it shakes out when we see the warrant, but if we do see Central Street Bridge appear, that has to be done pretty much right away. Maybe geriatric, there's some items that I would suggest using our available free cash right now in May. Also, if you recall, when we thought the feasibility study may have shown up last year, it did not, we took the money that we did have and put it in utilization. But as of now, I would be suggesting that we tap into our protocol short-term stabilization account that we created for these exact type of scenarios.
And that money was for the feasibility study for the school?
Yes, sir.
So we already had appropriated that, we just put it away some way, so we could use that money for the.
We can use that money.
How much was that about?
Well, our balance right now is $8.4 million in the short term right now.
Oh, okay, okay.
A long-term account that really should not be touched until we deal with this high school project is $29 million, $2.8 million in free cash. So we do have some things we can do to mitigate this situation. My concern is, I feel like since COVID took place, we've had the gravy train of lots and lots of federal and state money flowing down, and I believe it stopped, and we may be entering this new era of really needing to pay attention to where state money's coming in. Just as a quick reminder, we had KIRZAC money, we had ARPA money, the school had ESSER money, and I'm talking in the tens of dollars. So for instance, with the school department, with their budget right now, their ESSER grant, which was their version of ARPA, dried up this year. They funded teachers with it, their quote-unquote "level service" budget.
Yeah, now that money's gone.
These teachers.
Now that money's gone.
So that's one of the challenges we're dealing with. It is early right now, I'm not trying to sound too many alarms. I think at this time, we just really need to scrutinize the operating budget, be cautious as we proceed.
Exactly, and based on past years, like you said, we had semi-easy, this is probably one of the biggest issues that we have to have to deal with in quite a long time. I remember years ago, when Prop 2.5 came out, I was with the health department at the time working, and like I said, we could only raise our budget, again, we almost the same type of scenario, where we were 4%, 5%, 6% increase on our budgets throughout the years. All of a sudden, we can't raise it no more than 2.5%. We all had to deal with that. We all had to make an impact statement on what, you know, if we lost something, what impact would it have on our department or on serving the public as well, you know? Like I said, it's the first time in quite some time that you're probably uncomfortable with this whole thing as well.
At this time, to have it put together to this level, and I'll tell you, a lot of times, Paul Abadonsen and I will not represent the full amount of state aid to kind of have like a cushion later, but the numbers are so low that we couldn't do that. So I said, these are the exact figures as of right now, so.
I guess from what I read too, I guess the state aid is based on growth rate and taxes coming in for the state, and I believe last year it was close to 3%. This year is about 1.5, 1.66%.
They haven't hit their targets, and at the same time, I mentioned the Student Opportunity Act. The big, big numbers we were getting in was the shuffling of the debt, if you will, based on Milford's demographics and challenges at the school department with special education and those language learners and whatnot. So that was in a five-year cycle, and as I understand it, this is the last year of it, and it does count as one of our Student Opportunity Act years. It's 4% where unrestricted general government aid came in at 3.
Okay.
That's kind of my main 22. When I say like a turning point, I think next year, we're going to be back to the 3, 2.5%. No more big, big numbers coming in for Chapter 70.
Right, right.
Is what I suspect. Hopefully, I'm wrong. That's including, but that's where we're going to go.
Sure.
So we're still early in the process right now. I would suggest that we've done in the past, certainly with the select budgets, that once they're put together, we may want to have them in in an open session, kind of go over and prioritize what we want to do, and see how it really fits into the big picture.
What I was going to recommend, which I was bringing up about when Prop 2.5 came in, the Select Board or other departments that are elected, would, you know, go to their departments and tell them the position we may be in, which isn't going to be like in the years past. So more or less, when you do a budget, or you do want to do an article, these are the things that you have to keep in mind when you want to do them. Maybe cut them in half, you know, or may perhaps seek your advice before they put them in the budget, before it comes to us. For like an article in the town meeting warrant, for instance, when we come before the board of selectmen to look at it and approve the warrant, I'd like it to go through some sort of process first, you know, from the department heads and yourself, you know, to let them know, the education and awareness part, let them know that it's not going to be like in the previous years.
Well, Steve, and as you guys know, I have a open-door policy.
You do, right.
And with a lot of work since that meeting, two weeks ago, and a lot of conversations, a lot of people are playing ball, I'm super proud of them, and we'll keep at it.
Sure, we all got to work together on this. That's what it is. Thank you. Anybody have any comments or concerns?
I think the concerns are valid, and I mean, you only have to watch the news to see what's happening at the state level, and they're not hitting targets. They haven't hit targets now in two months by big numbers. So, you know, it's, when you start to, where are things going to shake out as far as local aid, and then you add on to that the sheltering of migrants, the sheltering of homeless, and the cost that the state's incurring, you know, there's only so much money. They're not bringing in what they anticipated, yet they're spending far more than they ever expected.
That's the figure.
And it's not, it's not hitting a plateau. In fact, it's escalating. If you watch at least what the media presents, and what the government's presenting to the media, state government, that it's escalating far beyond anything they ever anticipated. So that plus the costs that are imposed on the local, our local community as well as others, you know, because quote "housing people," well, we have to educate those young people, and we have to provide services to everyone in this community. So our costs are escalating as well, and we're not seeing any relief whatsoever from either the federal government or the state in that regard. So I take your caution hot, because I think it's twofold. I think the burden's been placed on us to a great degree incrementally, and then in looking at from the state level, you can't give to Peter unless you take it from Paul. And that's, I don't mean this, Paul, but the bottom line comes down is, the money has to come from one place to give to another, and I fear that at least the cuts I've seen so far at the state level, I fear that we're kind of coming down the line to being next in line, meaning local communities. And that's a great concern, and I think we ought to express to our legislature, you know, our state rep, our state senator, and the governor as well, that you've already placed a burden on us, and you've given us nothing, not a penny. And to then take from us to cover that, which you created, we didn't create it, the state did, you know? The whole housing issue is, that's state law. They can blame the feds, it's state law. And I'll be frank with you, if I came across that border, I'd be coming to Massachusetts flat. I read the Globe last Sunday, and I don't begrudge anyone living in suitable housing. You know, I grew up in a housing project, I get it, but the migrants that are coming here that aren't American citizens, they're eligible to get $30,000 towards purchasing a home. Nobody offered me 30 grand. So I think some of our policies are upside down, but it's at the state level. They can't blame the feds. Yes, there's a federal issue about people coming here, but I think we, Massachusetts put out a welcome wagon that they can't afford.
They're going to be more attractive.
And that's reality. And again, I don't want anybody living on the street very far from it. That's not where I come from. But the financial issues we're going to face, and every one of our residents, you know, from elders down to young couples who are just starting out, is going to be significant, I think.
It is.
I think people should truly, this isn't an issue of how can I help the world, this is an issue of how am I going to save every person that wants to come over the border into Massachusetts? Honestly, it's going to come down to how do you save your own home?
Exactly, that's what it's looking for now.
That's what we're coming to.
What it's looking like now.
And that's not the clarion call of, oh my God, the house is on fire. We're in trouble. We're in trouble, and anyone that believes differently, watch the news, just watch the news, and see the responses from the governor, the governor.
See the local leader we're getting.
And no, but just the personal impact upon her to try to address these issues, it's significant. It's significant. Read today's Globe, and it tells you that very story of the impact that the governor personally is feeling to try to accomplish that which the law, present law in this state requires. And it's, it's leading to not just the diminishment of what I think local aid and other assistance is going to be. We're not going to see increases, I don't believe, to cover the education of children that have been thrust into the community.
They don't have the money.
But beyond that, I really think it's going to be more devastating than we believe today.
I think you're right.
That's my take on it.
It's a good take, Tom.
I hope I'm wrong.
So I hope we're all wrong, but I still have that.
Yeah, no, and that's the way it's going, you know?
The geriatric authority, I, you know, I, I've had the position right along that this is a decision that has to be made by town meeting, and has to be made now, you know, in my opinion. I understand there's two components to this. One is financial. Do we want to be in this business? A business, by the way, that's failing across.
Impressionation.
Exactly, Paul, let alone Massachusetts. So it's not an issue of your municipality, you're in this business, it's a failing business, and it's a failing business because during COVID, the insurance companies figured it out. It's cheaper for us to send you home than put you in this rehab, and we send a VNA by, a nurse by, that comes by, or a therapist that comes by, and they can go and visit. can go and visit a dozen patients in one day, $8. And we paid them $8. We were paying them $8 to stay at this institution, then we're paying $8 in the next shift, and $8 in the next shift. They figured it out, okay? And the most lucrative businesses in the world are people that gamble, right? So it's casinos and insurance companies. Insurance companies gamble everything. Is your house going to catch fire or not catch fire? You're going to crash or not crash? You're going to die or not die? They know. And in, in looking at this, they figured it out. It's cheaper, far cheaper. So that was the bulk of the money coming in to geriatric authority.
Mm-hmm.
It's not coming back. So I understand that economic side, but I understand in Milford, the emotional side of it. And I can't personally discount that. I've never been a benefit of it, but I know people that have, and I know how strong that bond is. We as a community have to figure out, are we prepared to spend two and a half, three, $4 million a year to keep the geriatric authority going? Because I think this is the beginning. When you talk 2.4, you know, I think it's the beginning. I, I don't think it's the end.
Yeah, I think you're right. I don't see it getting any better.
Because as things diminish, your costs broaden, they don't, they don't come in, they don't diminish because you still have to run the same facility, you still have to maintain a lot of different things.
Mm-hmm.
So I really believe that we have an obligation to bring this to town meeting if others don't and really get a feel of where's the town? What are, what are the towns people want as far as this authority? And, you know, and where are we going? Because it's a big number, and it's going to be a bigger number, and it's not going away. Because the people that were paying before are not going to do it. You know, you simply look at our emergency department here, and what are they doing? They're encouraging people and pushing them off onto other outskirts where people can get treatment quicker for minor things, so-called medical minor things, meaning the flu, this, that, versus the person that's in a car crash. Um, you know, schools to hire teachers on one-time money, I wasn't aware of that. I am surprised by that, especially here in Milford. You never use one-time money to fund anything that's going to be prolonged.
Very predictable that this would happen.
Yeah, of course it was.
I mean, you want to go buy three new school buses, okay, well.
Yeah, it's different.
They have their value and, you know, as much as it diminishes over time, but I just don't understand how we, we as a community hired personnel knowing with one-time money that those costs are going to be there. Because you set yourself up, you set yourself up, one, for a huge fight to try to maintain it, or if you can, the disappointment that now you're telling employees they're laid off.
Sure.
I, when I heard that tonight, I just, and my colleague, you know, Paul was speaking about two and a half, you know, I, I had to reduce positions. I, we did early retirement here. I, I can remember managing the police, I lost four positions. I lost two lieutenants. I lost several positions. And the goal was literally, get as many people out the door as you can that fell within the parameters that were allowed by the state letting us do early retirement. If you said to me, oh, here's a grant, you know, go hire those positions back on a one-year, two-year, three-year grant, I, I, I don't want to use the word disappointment, I'm surprised.
I'm disappointed.
I'm very surprised.
Yeah.
But that's what I take away from our discussion to this point. And Mr. Chairman, I.
Very well, very well.
I offer to the rest of you.
Thank you. Michael?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Zach, first of all, I want to say thank you to you and all the department heads for the proactive activity, putting these numbers together. But as I sit here this evening and I listen to you, a part of me also says that should we be starting to look at the year 2026 in some way? I know it's hard to try to zone in like we do here with these numbers, but there's things that through the course of 2025, that we should be kind of looking at for 2026, knowing that the trend is, I hate to use the word backwards, but it's not what it was.
That's a, that's a great question. Um, and hopefully, I assure you that I'm constantly living in the future.
Yes.
So yes, to answer it bluntly, we should definitely be focused on '26, '27 and beyond, not only for the challenges that, that Select and Alpham have presented, that I have presented, Chairman had presented with the state, but also to keep our eye on the prize with this plan that we have been so diligently following for seven years now. So one thing, you see the excess levy capacity of almost $6 million, it would be so easy to go, oh, we'll just tap into that for to fund the operational requests that are coming down the line. If you do that, your mind will just throw away our whole plan that we've put together. It's just that's really where the rubber meets the road here. Like, we have been so disciplined, we need to remain disciplined at this point.
And I think what's important too is that, you know, in years past, where we've had the ability, when a resident would make the statement to us, you know, my taxes went up by such and such, we always had the ability to sell the services that were offered. And as you know, and the way it sounds, is that some of those services may slowly get rolled back. But yet the taxes are still, as you know, going to increase. So that's going to be a hard sell to the residents of the community when their tax bills are going up. But from a town standpoint, we might have to, I'm not saying we are, but we might have to in later on in '25, maybe in '26, maybe in '27, roll some of the benefits that they're getting back. And so that's why I circle back to my original question, and thank you for answering it, is, you know, these numbers are kind of like you say, they're not solid, but they're close.
Yeah.
So we can say, okay, 2025, we have somewhat of a roadmap in front of us. But now, at this point, or maybe after the May town meeting, should we start looking into '26 and '27? You know, estimating best we can where we think state aid's going to be? Yeah, we know, we know the high school is the white elephant in the room. We know it's coming. When it comes, we know it's coming, you know, and it's going to be a big number. And are those, you know, should we be looking at those numbers now and collectively with department heads and the Board of Selectment and our town administrator who does a phenomenal job, be sitting down and looking at those so that when the year 2026 comes and we're sitting here, again, it's not something like this? We've been working on it right along.
Exactly, exactly. Now, I'm not screaming from the rooftops that we need to do cuts.
Right.
Not suggesting that.
Yes.
But I am highly suggesting that we control and control.
Right, 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 right. And I'm not using, I'm not saying we're suggesting to do cuts, I'm saying, but if it had to, you know, but the taxes are going up, it's a hard, you know, when you're at stop and shop.
Challenges.
And that's one challenge that we don't want to face either as a Select Board, is to increase the taxes or ask for an override. That's one thing I know we're dead against.
Right.
You know, so if there's things we have to control in the operational budget, we're going to have to do that. You know, one of the things I was going to mention that Tom brought up when it came to the geriatric authority is, you know, and I mentioned before about educating and making aware our department heads and whatnot when they're preparing budgets, but also the, and the most important too is the ultimate decision makers are the town meeting members.
Right.
And perhaps they should be more educated and aware of what's, I'm not saying with what the entire warrant, but, you know, those that are going to be costing some serious money, be more educated and aware of what their decisions should be so they make an informed decision, you know? And that way there, they could see that if they, again, they're the ultimate decision maker, if they want to approve the two and a half million for the, that's them, you know, that's, they approved it, that's a good representation of our town. There's eight precincts, each has so many members from that, and that's a good representative of our town. But like I said, they should be aware of what they're voting on when it comes to expenses such as that and the other high-ticket items. Anyway, great job.
Thank you.
Really, thank you so much. It was explained very, very good and very thorough, and that's something we have to take caution to heart that you gave us, and other departments have to do the same. Thank you.
We gave, we were putting out the budget package now, we give until March 15th, so once we get a better picture of the missions, I'll come back, I'll update you guys. But I have one last thing for tonight. So as of the results of Tuesday's.
The storm.
We are now in deficit spending for the snow and ice budget. Statistically, I need your permission to continue deficit spending, I would ask for a motion.
Make a motion that we allow deficit spending for the snow and ice at the highway deposit.
I would second that, Mr. Chairman.
And make that unanimous. See, this is another example of things that we don't realize that's going to, that's going to come up, you know? So again, that's something we have to really keep our eye on. But thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you, Zach.
That's one line, and we don't want to increase because you can never decrease it.
Right.
You got it.
Deficit spend, pay your bills. If you increase it, you're setting money into an account that you may never use. Take this, how many storms have we had? So I appreciate you raising that, Zach, and that you will be informed of these stuff. And Mr. Chairman, I'll say, as far as the geriatric authority, I agree with you whole heartedly. I think in order for people to balance, here's the financial part of it, and here's the emotional part of it. I think we understand the emotional part of it because it comes to individuals or individuals who have talked to other individuals in the community. So that's something that's in the heart, you know?
Yeah.
The financial part of it, I'm not so sure that everyone appreciates the magnitude of what we're talking about today, let alone moving forward. Because you only have to look, I mean, in the city of Boston alone, we ran into a situation just past month in which nine hospitals, nine hospitals in Massachusetts were going under. They were going under. Why? Because their recovery from insurance companies aren't what.
It would have shook it to.
It's not that which will sustain them.
Right.
So if you have nine major hospitals, our own hospital has lost millions of dollars, you know, thus the merger with UMass.
Right.
Facts are facts.
Right.
So if anyone thinks it's going to get better financially, I, and I'm one, believe me, my heart is there to take care of people, but I think that it's up to town meeting and the residents of this community to decide. We're willing to take this out of our own purse every year because it's going to be significant. This is not a one-time situation. It's not a next-year situation. It's an escalating year-to-year situation that people have to weigh, and they have to make decisions about their interests. And, you know, and I also look at the elders, you know, the folks that are on fixed incomes, how much more can they.
Exactly.
Endure to try to meet these needs as well? And if anyone was going to do it, I believe it would be that constituency because there's a real tie in that constituency, you know, to the authority, to the geriatric authority. This has to come to a head. It does. And for us to sit out and wait and wait, I honestly, I believe that we're waiting for a decision that should have been made. And I would encourage the board, I would encourage our staff to work with the authority. Bring this matter to town meeting, let town meeting decide, and then we'll all abide by that decision to keep protracting this and, you know, did the finance committee do their due diligence? You know, they've worked very, very hard.
They do.
They, you know, they really, really do. Authorities work very hard. This isn't, and I don't speak against a particular group of people that have worked.
No.
Believe me, more hours.
They put their time in, that's for sure.
More time, more effort than any of us, well, any, more than me.
Me too.
Um, you know, whether it be the folks that are there at the authority, the finance committee, I know people that have been involved, and I know their efforts, and I know their caring, and it's not, you know, I'm not getting into who put what on paper and who wants to. The facts are the facts of what you just said, Zach, you know? The numbers are the numbers, and they're not going down, they're going up.
Going up, and Medicaid isn't helping either.
It's, it's, it's time for us to face, here's where that market is, and let the townspeople make a decision. Because other than that, we're spinning our wheels gathering.
Doing the same thing over and over again, every year.
Just gathering facts.
Yeah.
Oh, it's costing us more. Oh, they're not paying us as much. Oh, this has happened, that's it. It's getting us. It's getting us absolutely nowhere, other than further in financial troubles that I think town meeting is the appropriate place to decide, do we want to provide this service?
Mm-hmm.
You know, it's very much like the water company. Do we want to buy the water company? Do we want to have our own vested future in the most essential commodity, right? Life, water.
Yeah, well, that's, that's the difference, yeah.
And we left that to town meeting. We brought it to town meeting, and town meeting decided, we should own this. It shouldn't be owned privately because it affects every human being in this community.
Right.
So that's where I am with it. I, Zach, I thank you immensely for bringing this information to us, and I'm hopeful that we can finally bring to town meeting and let them decide on the geriatric authority because with the other pressures, I think we're in trouble.
Mm-hmm. Good.
Thank you.
Thank you, Zach.
Thank you.
Thank you, Zachs.
Good night. And like you said, Tom too, and Michael, the two boards, whether it be the finance committee or the trustees for the geriatric authority, we have very good people on those boards. It's through no fault of theirs at all. It's just a sign of the times. You know, like you mentioned, there's people, a lot of people in our generation and older that are being taken care of at home. That service is not needed as much as it used to be.
Well, they made it where, the insurance companies made it where it's not necessary. They're telling you.
Right.
How it's going to be done. And you have a choice.
Yeah.
If you want to go to the geriatric, pay out of your pocket.
Out of your pocket.
Have at it.
Right.
But they're not going to pay.
And if you have like Medicaid, Medicaid isn't paying close to what the real, the real costs are.
They're not paying anything. They're not sending you there, right? They figured out an easier way through COVID to accomplish the same result of what they required to do.
COVID's changed a lot of things in the world.
And it's the times that we're in, and we have to make a decision based on what we're facing.
Yeah.
Anyway, thank you, both of you, for your help. Anyway, next on the agenda is town administrators' report. Ricky?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just three items tonight. I just want to advise the board that the HVAC project at the animal control building is now complete. board that the HVAC project at the animal control building is now complete, a new unit was installed, it's a significant upgrade in this building, and I want to thank facilities director Carlos Benjamin, who was the main person overseeing the work as the project progressed. We did receive a firefighter safety equipment grant award, they were announced, Milford received the maximum grant award of $25,000 for our community size, the grant will fund nine portable radios and four rack charging units to recharge and condition multiple batteries. Again, I want to thank fire chief Mark Nelson, he submitted the application on behalf of the town. And finally, we did also participate and receive a municipal cybersecurity awareness grant, IT director Chris George informed me the town has been approved for this grant, it will allow town employees to receive one year of online cybersecurity training services from the executive office of technology services and security, the program will deliver an initial and final assessment, cybersecurity awareness training, and threat simulation. Again, want to thank IT director Chris George, he's been vigilant and diligent in submitting these type of applications, which as you know is so important to our IT infrastructure here in town, and that's all I have tonight, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Rick, anybody have any questions?
I do not.
Comments? No? Okay. Old business?
I do not have any.
Michael?
Chairman, I do, and if I may, address this to the town administrator, Rick, I got a couple of correspondence about the situation with enterprise again, and I didn't know if you were involved in that, I know you were when I brought it up about a month ago, you said it was already, you had already had somebody look at it, I didn't know if you had seen what came out again the other day in the, in the snowstorm about the parking of two residents on Prairie Street.
Yeah, it's being addressed, the police chief did go down and speak to people personally, I spoke personally with corporate.
Okay.
They understand, we are going to monitor it, and if necessary, while we don't like to do this, we will be towing vehicles.
I thought something was up, because when I did get the correspondence, I did go there, I saw, there's a, there's a sign, it says, no parking from here to corner, which is right outside the building, there were two vehicles there, but that was the day of the storm.
Yeah.
Following day, all day, that was empty, but this morning there was a vehicle there again.
Okay.
Gone tonight.
Yeah.
But I did, and they also make reference to a vehicle being parked farther down on Prairie Street by St. Mary's Cemetery, I did see that vehicle as well, so, you know, if we could, you know, just follow up, and I, I know you will, or you already have, you know, please be a good neighbor, I know it's tough, but, you know, that would greatly be appreciated, thank you, Rick.
Thank you, Michael. Yep. Okay, nothing else on the old business, then we'll move on to new business, and we have an application filed by Taraseo De Roca Incorporated of 119 East Main Street, Milford. They filed an application seeking a new common victual's license for their establishment, and all paperwork is in order, building commissioner, it's just, it's a CB zone and it's an allowable use, they have accessible restrooms, occupant load is 123, town planner, no change in actual use, tax collector says there's no outstanding taxes, town treasurer has no outstanding liens, fire chief has no objections, police chief has approved, and also the board of health has no violations, therefore, if anybody has any comments or concerns with that, if not, I'll entertain a motion to approve.
That we approve the common victual license for Tradicio De Roca Inc., 119 East Main Street. I think they're going to operate seven days a week, 5:30 to 10:00 PM, but whatever standards that are set by the different town departments.
I would second that, Mr. Chairman.
And I make that unanimous, thank you for that. Next on the agenda is a, seeking a common victual's license for JHM Fortune LLC, doing business as the Best Western at Three Fortune Boulevard, they have filed an application seeking a new common victual's license, and all paperwork is in order for this as well. They always did have a continental breakfast setup, and they did have some seats in there, but right now they wanted to make it official that now people can get their continental breakfast and also sit down in their dining room that they have there as, as well. Again, the building commissioner has approved this as well, it has 63 guest rooms, and all restrooms are accessible, town planner, okay, they amended a site plan with limited self-service, so there is no waitstaff, so everything is fine, there is no outstanding taxes for the tax collector, no outstanding liens that the town treasurer said, fire department has no objections, police chief has approved, the board of health has no violations, entertain a motion to approve the application for a new common victual's license.
I make the motion that we approve the common victual license for JHM Fortune LLC, DBA Best Western, Three Fortune Boulevard, North and Massachusetts.
Thank you.
I would second that, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Michael, and I make that unanimous. Next on the agenda is a email from Zach Taylor.
Let them escape. Go ahead, we let them escape.
Oh, yeah, we let them escape, I know, I should have said.
It's got a biggie.
Yeah, anyway, it's to a reappointment of our town treasurer, Chris Pillar, to a three-year term on the retirement board, just a brief on that, I think, believe this is Chris's third term.
I believe so.
That he has on here, and also a town accountant is a very key member of, of this board, as a matter of fact, we have two key members on there that we're very fortunate of, is Zach, who's the ex officio officer, as well as our town accountant, which, which makes that even better, as well as three other members that are very well qualified. As a member, I was a member several years ago, or many years ago, on the retirement board, by, at that time, there was only three members, and the, and the town accountant played a very important part on that, and of course, the Peric, who is the agency that oversees the municipal retirement boards, always emphasizes that they would more or less encourage municipalities to have their town accountant on there as well. Anyway, I'll entertain a motion to reappoint Chris Pillar for another three-year term on the retirement board.
I make a motion that we reappoint Chris Pillar. As a member of the retirement board, and I agree with you, Mr. Chairman, it's for three years that it is valuable to have people there that are not only looking out for the retirees, but for the community itself.
Exactly.
Second that, Mr. Chairman.
And I make that unanimous, thank you so much for that. Next on the agenda would be the Milford Youth Center acceptance of gifts, we do have a gift that's given to the Milford Youth Center by Albin Brazza Attorneys, they gave $5,000 to be used, and again, this is a, several times, I believe, they did this with that large amount, and we thank them for their generosity, for now, and also for the generosity that they've given us in the past, we need to make, we need to vote on accepting this.
I make a motion, Mr. Chairman, that we accept the gift from Gina Brazza and Ali Ali, Alavi, excuse me, Alavi and Brazza PC Law Firm, as you mentioned, this is not a one-time gift, they, Gina and Ali have made numerous gifts, not only the youth center, but other town organizations and departments to make a difference in this community, and one, I'm grateful, and I know that each of you are, for their generosity, this is $5,000 to be utilized by the Milford Youth Center for programming, just, as they say, keep up the great work.
Yeah.
So I make the motion that we accept the gift, and we'd be pleased that we send them a, a letter that is, you know, to the level of their commitment to this community and thanking them.
Very good, thank you, Tom, for that. Michael?
Chairman, before I second that, I'd also like to say that, you know, as we all watch the news these days, we understand the importance of a facility like the Milford Youth Center for the youth of our community to, to go to for a safe haven and, and programs that they can figure things out in the world, so to the law firm, I'd like to say thank you very much for your kind gift, your very generous gift, I mean, continuing as you do always to support not only the Milford community, but the youth of this community, and it's greatly appreciated, and I know I speak on behalf of the board, thank you very much, and I would gladly second that motion.
Very good, thank you, Michael, thank you, Tom, for your comments, and I, and I have the same tools for the, for that law firm, for the Brazzas and Alvi as well, thank you very much for your generosity, and I make that unanimous, thanks. Next on the agenda would be a planning board remand regarding the remand of zoning bylaw, we have a little memorandum from Larry Duncan, our town planner, at the regular meeting of February 6, 2024, the planning board directed me to forward the following zoning bylaw amendment proposal to the select board for inclusion on the upcoming annual town meeting warrant, the amendments pertain to the following, to amend the zoning bylaw relating to brew pub uses, and again, to amend the zoning bylaw relating electronic vehicle charging stations, and number three, to amend the zoning bylaw relating to contractor yard uses, and he recommends that we would refer this to the planning board for a public hearing and report to town meeting for the May 20, 2024 annual town meeting. Attached are the proposed amendments or articles that we all had a chance to look at, therefore, I have a motion to make this a remand to the planning board for their review and also a possible public hearing.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we refer the amendments to the planning board for public hearing and report to the town meeting for May 20, 2024 annual town meeting to amend zoning bylaws related to brew pub uses, to amend the zoning bylaw relating to electronic vehicle charging stations, and to amend the zoning bylaw relating to contractors and yard uses.
Good, Michael?
I would second that, Mr. Chairman.
And I make that unanimous, thank you. Next on the agenda is also another memo from our town planner regarding a, the, a bylaw amendment to the sports courts lighting, town council Murray and Jerry Moody and Larry have developed the following zoning bylaw amendments for inclusion in the upcoming annual town meeting warrant, the amendment provides a correction of language in the current zoning bylaw relating to sports court lighting that is unclear and or conflicting, the amendment will also provide for consistency among the residential zones by making sports courts uses special permits in the RC and RD residential districts, and if we could refer to the planning board for a public hearing on this, for our upcoming annual town meeting on May 20, 2024, and, yeah, this, the sports courts that we are familiar with, that we had passed about a year or so ago, one of the concerns was the, the lighting, and presently, there are some sports courts there that have a lighting that we mentioned before that could make Fenway Park blush, but anyway, these, this new amendment to the bylaw would help address this concern and therefore, you know, create a better environment for the neighbors so we won't have that glare effect that it would usually have on them at various times, it would control not only the glare, where it would have to be directed on the property itself, but also the height of the light itself, so I think that's a very great step in the right direction. Entertain a motion to approve this, or to move this on to the planning board?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we refer to the planning board amendment to zoning bylaw concerned with sports court lighting for public hearing and to report to the town meeting for May 20, 2024 annual town meeting.
Thank you, Tom.
I would second that, Mr. Chairman.
And I make that unanimous, thank you for that. Next on the agenda is a, the building commissioner would like to recommend a part-time local building inspector, we have a memo here from Rick, and dated February 7, 2024, the position of part-time local building inspector was advertised both on the town website and indeed.com, we received eight applications for this position, and reviewed the resumes with HR director, after careful consideration, we recommended Mr. Kevin Tomaso for the position, Kevin is a licensed contractor with the state of Massachusetts, and also owned and operated Tomaso Home Improvement for 20 years, he is a certified architectural draughtman and a career Milford firefighter, Mr. Tomaso was very familiar with the town, in addition, Mr. Tomaso was also co-owner of, carpenter of TNT Builders for five years, if approved, they would recommend a pay of grade seven, step four on the article two, with a starting hourly wage of $39.07, and he would begin work February 26, 2024, and I'm sure this here would have to be approved by the personnel board as well.
Any vote I would want to be subject to personnel board.
Exactly, that's, thank you. Motion to approve this recommendation for the part-time local building inspector with the pay, providing it is approved by the personnel board.
I make a motion that we approve the appointment of Kevin Tomaso to the position as recommended by the town administrator, at the rate of pay as recommended by the town administrator upon the approval of the personnel board.
I would second that, Mr. Chairman.
And I make that unanimous, thank you. Next on the agenda is the contract award recommending that the select board award the demolition of the three basement locker rooms project at the Milford Police Station to Fox Painting, Inc., on this here, we got two quotes, and the first quote was Fox Painting Company for $120,000, the next, and the next was Full Scope Contracting for $166,417.36, therefore, we would go with Fox, I believe Fox Painting, Rick, has also been a contractor for us in the past?
As has Full Scope, both have done very good work.
Sure.
Scope, if you remember, did the senior center.
Right, okay.
Project Fox, the painting and, and other projects, yes.
Sure, thank you. Any comments or concerns, if not, entertain a motion.
Both reputable companies, the little bit is Fox Paint and Company, Inc., so I make a recommendation that we ought to, we award the contract for $120,000 for the demolition of three basement locker rooms at Milford Police Station to Fox Painting Company, Inc., 23 Fox Street, North and Massachusetts.
Very good.
I would second that, Mr. Chairman.
And I make that unanimous, thank you, thanks, Tom, and thanks, Michael, thank you, Rick.
Thank you.
Next on the agenda is a memo from the youth center director.
Invitation.
Oh, I'm sorry, didn't see that, okay, thank you. Next on the agenda is invitation to speak, no one here, Chris, anything on there? Okay, thank you for that, thanks, Tom. Next would be.
Correspondence.
Correspondence.
I have none.
I have none, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, the only thing we have on the correspondence is the, the Milford Youth Center from Jen, and she gave us a breakdown of what she had done, I mean, tremendous work, Milford Youth Center Thanksgiving, thank you, they, it was held on November 21, 2023, and it was a youth success, they served over 130 kids and over 50 special guests, including the volunteers and the staff members, so that went over very well, and would like to thank the, numerous businesses and individuals that helped donate to make this such a success, and very generous donations to businesses and individuals, thank you so much for that. They also had a Giving Tuesday, thank you, and they raised over $4,061, and again, a lot of wonderful individuals who donated their money for that, and I thought that was extremely generous, to help, like what Michael you just said, a very worthwhile center, especially that helping the, the youth of, of our town. The Milford Youth Center had a holiday, thank you, and they distributed over $30,000 worth of gifts to over 200 youths and families, which I thought was incredible, and again, all this comes from donations from businesses and individuals, and again, we can't thank them enough, only in Milford, I guess, that we can get that type of generosity, and of course, you had a, a few Milford, I mean miscellaneous donations ranging from $25 all the way to $500, and again, a lot of hard work in securing these donations that Jen did, and also her staff, and again, I can't thank the, the individuals and businesses that helped make this such a success, thank you so much. There is no executive session, therefore, anybody else have anything, any member have anything to say, or you want to add to anything?
Mr. Chairman, I do not.
Thank you, I'll. Thank you, I'll entertain a motion.
I motion, Mr. Chairman.
And I would second that, Mr. Chairman.
And I make that unanimous, and I want to thank everybody for tuning us in today, and have a good night. Thank you so much.